All right, we'd like to get this meeting started at 7 o'clock. I would like to call the regular meeting of the Hazel Park Board of Education to order on February 12, 2018.
Roll call.
Atkins?
Here.
Hinton?
Here.
Mr. Hempel?
Here.
Hammond?
Here.
Mrs. Hempel?
Here.
No?
Here.
Slack?
All right, please stand for invocation, which will be given by Pastor Barry David of Blyon Mark Church, which will be immediately followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Loving Father, we thank you for your favor in our lives and for the many blessings that you give to us. Thank you for the leaders that serve this district with great honor. We are grateful for our superintendent, for our hard-working Board of Education members, for our administrative staff, and especially for the sovereigns of the schoolhouse, our teacher corps, who daily give of themselves to bring excellence in education to our students. Tonight, we ask for wisdom beyond education. We ask for teamwork and unity to conquer the challenges the district faces today. May you help us in such a way that they may say, "It is the Lord that helped us. This is Thine hand; the Lord hath done it." May every decision be according to your will, and for all that you do on our behalf, we'll be careful to give you the praise. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, can I get a motion for the approval of agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda is written.
Second. Discussion, there was one minor change, the First Amendment, or the amendment to the budget is going to be an informational item, not an action item. Okay. Any other discussion?
No.
Who's the second on that?
Oh, it's Chris.
Okay, roll call.
No?
Yes.
Slack?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Mr. Hempel?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Mrs. Hempel?
Yes.
Atkins?
Yes. All right, this moves on to public comment. Before we move on to the special order of business, we'd like to remind the audience to fill out the slips of paper if you intend to talk for public comment. Do we have any slips at this time?
There was not.
Is there anyone wishing to talk? Okay, then we'll move forward. We have one special order of business from the Hazel Park Band Boosters today, so who's going to talk with us? Can you make sure you introduce yourselves?
Hi, I'm Robin Kijorski.
Melanie Love.
And good evening. We are members of the Hazel Park High School Band Council here on behalf of the Hazel Park High School Band Program. For years, we've held a golf outing as a means of fundraising for our program. Though the past two years we have not been able to hold this event, we are excited to announce that our band boosters have organized this amazing opportunity for upcoming June. This year's outing will take place at the Riverbank Golf Club located at 24095 Curry Road in South Lyon on Saturday, June 2 at 8:00 a.m. In the past, the Board of Education has not only golfed in this event, but also sponsored a hole. We would like to formally invite everyone to the golf outing and ask if we can continue to count on your support with the hole sponsorship. Your contribution and support would mean a great deal to us students, and we'll leave the information with you to look at when you have time. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
We will get back to you on that. All right, we can move on to the consent agenda. Can you get a motion?
Motion to approve the consent agenda is written.
I second the motion.
Consent agenda is our standard inclusion that we have every meeting in terms of financials, announcements, that sort of thing. So go ahead, roll call.
No?
Yes.
Mr. Hempel?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Mrs. Hempel?
Yes.
Slack?
Yes.
Atkins?
Yes. All right, we have no unfinished business. That'll move us on to new business. So first thing on here is the intent to eliminate positions. Do we want to talk up front or go each one? Yeah, can we get a motion on the first item?
I move that the Board of Education approve the administration's request to eliminate an ELL teacher position and a .5 FTE steam position for the remainder of this 2017-18 school year as presented.
I second the motion.
Discussion?
Okay, I just talked generally around the positions as a whole and on the general motion. So throughout this school year, we've been looking for positions that perhaps that we could move left and right to have some financial savings to the school district. So this evening, we will present positions that we are looking to eliminate that have been approved last year within the school budget. These positions, some of them have remained unfilled. Some of the positions have been, you will see that we will eliminate people that will no longer have a position, but a majority of these positions were either unfilled or have people that are being transferred to new positions within the district.
Just so the public knows, can you tell us which ones are being eliminated?
Sure. So the Dean of Students at Hazel Park Junior High School, this position was eliminated and the staff member was moved to the Assistant Principal at the high school. The Dean of Student at Hazel Park High School, this person's position is being eliminated. For the Sunday and Bank Deposit Security Guards, these evening positions are being eliminated, but given the opportunity to have positions during the day as security guards either at the high school or the junior high. The EL teacher resigned, and so this position is not being refilled. The halftime steam teacher at Hoover Elementary School, this teacher is taking a leave for the remainder of the school year and next year, so half the position is being filled with teachers being moved out of a program and a center program. The other half of the position is being eliminated. The Hall Monitor at Hazel Park High School, this position, this person left, and so this position is being eliminated. Three Behavior Intervention Paraprofessionals at each elementary school, one position is being eliminated because it remained unfilled. The other two positions are being eliminated, but two staff members are being moved into other open positions within the school district. Two Meal Paraprofessionals, Hazel Park Junior High School, these positions remained unfilled, and so the positions are being eliminated. Special Education Substitute Instructional Paraprofessional, this position is being transferred to another open paraprofessional position within the school district. The position is being eliminated. Parking Lab Paraprofessionals at all three elementary schools, these positions were remained unfilled, the positions are being eliminated. EI Paraprofessional at Hoover Elementary School, this position is being eliminated and transferred to another open paraprofessional position within the district.
So...
No, surely?
Six.
No, I'm sorry, Dr. Coopie. The EI position at Hoover, that paraprofessional resigned, we're not filling them.
They resigned. Thank you for the correction.
Okay, so I'm looking at this, so there's like seven people that are making moves. So is, we're looking at cost savings, so by moving these seven people, is there really even a cost savings, or are we just moving them into different areas?
No, absolutely, there's a cost savings because those positions are being eliminated. And so therefore, those positions, the other positions would have been filled, so instead of, we're looking at positions that were mandated or mandated through a special education program versus positions that weren't necessarily mandated, or we no longer have children. So for example, the EI Paraprofessional at Hoover Elementary School, we had a reduction of students, so there's no longer a need for two paraprofessionals. Behavior Intervention Paraprofessionals at each elementary school are not mandated positions, so those are going into mandated special education positions. So we must have support in special education. While we really like and want the behavior support, it's not mandated by law to have that behavior support. So those are savings. The evening security, we already know and have shared, that's about a $20,000 cost savings to the district by moving those up during the day into the positions. And so one of the position at the high school, we had a staff member leave, so they're filling a position where a staff member left. So it is a cost saving. So they're moving where we've had people move in and out of positions. Instead of filling those, we're taking people that are already here and putting them into positions that we feel we must fill, into positions that maybe we feel like where we would like to have those positions. It's more of needs versus wants.
So we're taking action on this to help support the budget?
Yes.
Okay, so since we're doing this, I would just like to throw out there, the preschool academy, I know that we are running longer days than we should with it, and I think if it's a burden on the district that maybe we should look at giving notice and maybe trying to buy spring break, maybe have that program shut down to save the district money because I know when Dan was here, he mentioned that we need to look at it. Chuck mentioned we need to look at it, so I think we need to look at it.
So certainly, there'll be some committee conversations that we would have at some point in time, and so thank you for that suggestion. I'm sure that's something that we can look into. As you know that I've shared with the board, there's a committee that's already functioning to look at GSRP, so that's a GSRP conversation.
And the committee is what board members are on that committee?
That would not be a board committee, that would be a committee at the administrative level.
And I understand the committees, but we are the seven elected, and I think that we need to know what's going on with all committees. So I understand there's a committee, but if there's an urgency for the budget, then the urgency needs to start now.
So I think the intention is to look at this program, understand the costs, the trade-offs, what will happen with it, and so, Dr. Coopie, please go ahead and have that conversation with that committee. I would assume that the financial ramifications would bubble up to the financial committee.
That's the intention.
All right, so she covered all of the eliminated positions. We're just kind of having general discussion, but each of the votes are broken out because we have members of the board that have conflict, so that's the main reason for that. Does anybody have any other discussion on this, that they had questions they had?
You know, I do. Do you have an approximate amount of that saving?
We do have different savings within each area, but we don't have a savings, we can certainly get that to the board.
All right, thank you. Thank you, so we'll follow up on that. Any other discussion, board? Okay, roll call.
No?
Excuse me?
No?
Yes.
Mr. Hempel?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Mrs. Hempel?
Yes.
Slack?
Yes.
Atkins?
Yes.
Can I get a motion on the HPPA? The next action item?
Oh, it's Kristi or the...
It's Kristi.
Right here?
Yeah.
Yeah, in number two. I was on the back page. Okay, I move that the Board of Education approve the administration's request to eliminate the positions in the Hazel Park Paraprofessional Employee Group for the remainder of 2017-2018 school year as presented.
I second it.
Discussion on the parapro?
I just wanted to say I'm disappointed that we are having to do away with some of these behavioral parapros because I feel like we were finally starting to make some progress in the district with behaviors, and it's sad to see them go.
Yeah, they work really hard for the district, and I did echo your sentiments as well. It's really hard to see them go. Any other discussion? Okay, roll call.
Hinton?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Mr. Hempel?
Abstained due to conflict.
Mrs. Hempel?
Abstained due to familial conflict.
No?
Abstained due to familial conflict.
Slack?
Yes.
Atkins?
Yes. Next item is unaffiliated employees, I need a motion.
I move that the Board of Education approve the administration's request to eliminate positions in the unaffiliated employee group for the remainder of 2017-2018 school year as presented.
I second the motion.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Hinton?
Yes.
Mr. Hempel?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Mrs. Hempel?
Yes.
No?
Yes.
Slack?
Yes.
Atkins?
Abstained due to familial conflict. Next item is personnel recommendations. Can I get a motion?
I move the Board of Education accept the administration's recommendation for the ASME employee group as presented.
I second the motion.
Discussion? All right, roll call.
Mr. Hempel?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Mrs. Hempel?
Yes.
No?
Yes.
Slack?
Yes.
Atkins?
Abstained due to familial conflict. Next item is on the HPEA recommendations. Motion, please.
I move that the Board of Education accept the administration's recommendations for the HPEA employee group as presented.
I second the motion.
Discussion? Roll call.
No?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Mr. Hempel?
Yes.
Mrs. Hempel?
Yes.
Slack?
Yes.
Atkins?
Yes. All right, next, the paraprofessional recommendations, need a motion?
I move the Board of Education accept the administration's recommendation for the HPPA employee group as presented.
I second the motion.
Discussion? Roll call.
Slack?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Mr. Hempel?
Abstained due to familial conflict.
Mrs. Hempel?
Abstained due to familial conflict.
No?
Abstained due to familial conflict.
Atkins?
Yes. Next item, unaffiliated employees, need a motion?
I move that the Board of Education accept the administration's recommendations for the unaffiliated employee group as presented.
I second the motion.
Discussion? Roll call.
No?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Mr. Hempel?
Yes.
Mrs. Hempel?
Yes.
Slack?
Yes.
Atkins?
Abstained due to familial conflict. All right, next item is the Promise Home Update, it's Kayla here.
Ms. Rowley.
Ms. Rowley. So to start, just an update that winter scholarships have been sent out, so if a student has not received his or hers, it means we do not have the information we need from them, which is a winter semester billing statement and a fall grade report listing their GPA to make sure that they're over the 2.0 minimum. As of January, 44, the end of January, 44% of Hazel Park High School seniors, which is 108 students, had submitted a FAFSA, so that is up from 38.5% or so percent at the last meeting that I was at, so last month, and it's also up from this time last year. It is still far below our 80% goal. As a reminder, we have hit that one time, so it remains our goal to hit it again, it was a couple of years ago, and so we are working hard to make that happen. The Promise Home Scholarship application for the class of 2018 was emailed to students, and I also included it on your board report, just in case anyone asks you, you guys can send it out. It's really just a quick online application, and then there will also be a waiver that they need to sign, but that has not been released yet. It will be March or April. We try to wait until there's at least a chance that some of the students know for sure where they're going. There still will be some mind changes, but at least makes it a little bit easier to wait a little longer. I estimated this for you when somebody asked last month, but I wanted to tell you that as of the end of the fall semester, 131 total students have received Promise Home Scholarships with more than $280,000 total being given to those 131 students. Lastly, our Race to College fundraising dinner, so it's our fifth annual event, will be held from 5:30 to 8:00 p.m. on Monday, March 5 at Hazel Park High School. So first of all, I want to thank the Community Engagement Committee, who is being extremely helpful to us this year in terms of planning and getting some of the logistics together and in advance for their help with setup and teardown. But we're also very, very excited that James Regatto, the chef of Mabel Gray, will be catering it this year, so I'm just going to read the menu, so hopefully people can't resist buying tickets. And it is salad with green goddess, cucumber, pecorino, and chive, herb and spice roasted chicken, coconut milk braised red beans, southern-style greens, ciabatta bread, and dark chocolate brownies with salted caramel and butter pecan ice cream. So tickets, tickets do cost $60. They come with a Promise Home t-shirt that can be picked up at the door, and they are available at our website at hazelparkpromise.org. And for your convenience, I've made an envelope for each of you with four tickets in each envelope, just in case you are interested in buying tickets or selling. And we do have more, in case you just go crazy and want to keep selling more tickets, we can definitely help you with that.
Did you say 60 or 65?
60.
60.
Yep. Any questions? I did include in the board packet a one-page that we provide to students and parents about the scholarship, just so that you could know what they're receiving. It's really just an overview. It works best for seniors because it's pretty specific about what steps they need to take to make sure they receive it.
Thank you. The dinner sounds delicious, so I know I'll have to take this.
Thank you.
All right, the next item on our agenda is the First Amendment to the 2017-2018 General Fund Budget. I know that Laura Clayce is here from Plant Moran to begin the presentation, so thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to be here today. If you could pull up the PowerPoint presentation, I don't know how your system works here.
It's okay, we'll get there.
I'm pleased to be here to talk through the budget amendment that we would ask the Board of Education to consider for approval at future meetings. We did have the opportunity to talk to a couple of the members of the Finance Committee about this information in detail. What I distributed to you today is the copy of the PowerPoint presentation, a memo to the Board of Education, which explains some of the changes to the budget in detail, as well as a more detailed line-by-line snapshot, if you will, of the budget. My intention today was to walk you through this PowerPoint presentation, but certainly as you absorb that information, if you have any questions at all, please don't hesitate to ask, and either myself or the member of your finance team will get you the answers that you need. So what we have here on this slide is the actual results from your audited financial statements for the year ended June 30, 2017, and I'll just walk you through column by column so we can lay the groundwork for the discussion that we'll have. So in the far-left column, you had revenue for the year ended June of '17 of $36.7 million. You had expenditures of $36.4 million, and that left you with an excess of revenues over expenditures of $329,000 for the year that you ended June of '17. As you're well aware, the district is currently in a deficit position. You had a deficit of $5.9 million, so with that revenue surplus, you reduced the deficit to $5.6 million. Back in May of 2017, prior to the start of this fiscal year, the Board of Education did also adopt the budget for the year that we're in right now, the year ended June 30, 2018, and that's what you'll see in the middle column. So we had revenue expectations of $36.6 million, expenditures of $35.6 million. So again, an anticipated increase of revenue over expenditures of just about $1 million. And with that result, you would have reduced the deficit to $4.6 million. What we have here today, though, is the proposed amendment, and we'll talk through the changes and the situation that the district is in right now, is we believe that the deficit, rather than decreasing the million dollars that we anticipated, will end up increasing the deficit by about $1.5 million. The one thing I want to point out, and I'll say a number of times during this discussion, is even though this is not a pleasant result, and we'll walk through what needs to happen or why it's come to be, it does not have to be resolved in one year. Clearly, the goal of the Board of Education and the school district is to get out of deficit as quickly as you possibly can. However, the Michigan Department of Treasury is working with districts that are in deficit, and they've already started to give approval for the district to craft a plan that will allow you to get out of deficit in a longer-than-five-year period. And you may recall, when you first started the deficit conversations, you were looking at an eight-year plan at that point in time. So they are willing to work with everyone. This is a problem that needs to get solved, but it will be a number of different things that occur over a period of time to get the district out of deficit. So let's talk about the detail of what has happened and why. So this first slide here talks about the changes in the revenue. So the starting point is the budgeted revenue that we thought you would have for the year ended June 30, 2018. And you can see there are a number of changes, and the end result is the revenue will increase about $1.1 million. And with the board's permission, I'll just walk you line by line what this means, and that way you can absorb it as we go. So the first line is you have an increase in state aid that is due to the additional student enrollment, so that's a good thing. You have $884,000 of additional funding that's coming from the state of Michigan because you had an enrollment increase during the year. And that's based on your fall student count. It's not yet fully audited by the intermediate school district, but it is underway, and we don't expect that it will change substantially. The next line item is you, along with every district within the state of Michigan, receive some one-time-only state funding called Section 147A2. And what that really is, is additional funds that the state made available to all districts to help supplement the costs that you have for contributions into the statewide retirement system. So that's $123,000. We don't expect that that will recur into fiscal '19, but we'll take it while it's available. The next item is an increase in your categorical funding, so you receive a number of different grants from the state of Michigan, just like other districts, and we have $91,000 more than we had originally budgeted, so we'll pick that up as additional revenue. The next item is you are fortunate enough to apply for and receive the Hazel Park Literacy Grant, so you've got people in the community that are providing a grant for $54,000 that will allow you to provide some programming to the students, and those dollars will cover expenditures within the district to run that program. The next line item are federal grant reimbursements. So based on some changes in terms of programming that you'll offer between now and June 30, 2018, you'll have an additional $201,000 approximately of federal grant reimbursements that you can request from the federal government through the state of Michigan. Those were dollars that you would typically spend in the summertime, so they would have fallen into next fiscal year. We've been able to accelerate them, so we'd be able to utilize them before June 30. Then we have some reductions. So the allocation of UAALE funds to the center program, what that represents is the state of Michigan provides funding to all districts in the state under the unfunded actuarial liability for the retirement system. So they give you some dollars, and then they tell you to turn right around and write a check right back to the state of Michigan for the retirement system. And what they've done is they say, when we give you that funding and ask you to send it back, you should record the revenue where the employees are actually accounted for, if you will. So we do have some employees that are in your center program, which is separate and distinct from the general fund, and those UAALE dollars need to follow those compensation costs. So it's just a shifting of the accounting there. The next two items, though, are actual funding reductions. So as you know, you participate in the Great Start Readiness Program, and that funding comes to you based on the slots that you're available to offer to the students and you're able to fill. So the $242,000 reduction in revenue is comprised of a number of items. One, you're not utilizing all of the slots that are currently available, so you'll have reduced funding that will come from that. And then two, in the past and in the original budget, you had funding that was coming both from Wayne Reeser and Macomb ISD, and those funds were no longer provided in this year's budget, so we had to take those out. The next item is at-risk programs, so you receive funding from the state of Michigan for your at-risk program, and they tell you ahead of time how much money they think will be allocated to you. And unfortunately, after the start of the year, the state came back and reduced the allocation, not only to you, but all districts throughout the state of Michigan, so that's $109,000 reduction in revenue. And then the last item there that I have is other changes, which seems like a very large item to be calling other, it's $481,000. Really what that represents, the lion's share of that, is that direct pass-through money that I talked about a minute ago, that the state provides you for retirement funding. They're giving you an extra $462,000. They're giving you an extra $462,000, and then they're saying, "Send me a check for $462,000." So I have it in the revenue side, and you'll see when we talk about expenditures, it's in the expenditures as well. So when you get to the bottom, the projected revenue of $37.7 million, that agrees to the number that we talked about on the first slide. Now let's talk about the expenditure changes. So the original budget that was adopted back in May of 2017 would have anticipated that the expenditures for the district would be $35,626,000. Again, we have a series of changes that will get us to our new revised expenditure number. The first item is really a budgetary item. So if you think about what a budget is, we're looking at it as constantly estimating what you think your expenditures will be for a given year. This first-line item is we go through and we look and say, which individuals might be retiring from the district by June 30, in which case they would be entitled to the payouts of any accumulated sick time that they have. We've estimated that at $183,000. If those individuals don't retire, that expenditure will not be incurred. It'll be incurred at some point in the future when they leave service with the district, but we think they might be leaving prior to the end of the year. The next item is a one-time-only FICA cost to the district, and that really attaches itself to the 3% refund that all individuals that had had dollars withheld from their paycheck for the last several years paying into the retirement system. That was the court case that the state lost, and the dollars need to be refunded to the individual employees. The situation that we have here, though, is when the dollars were withheld from the individual's paycheck, they were not subjected to FICA, Social Security and Medicare. And about 50% of the districts in the state handled it this way. So it isn't anything that you did that was different than anyone else. Almost all the districts in the tri-county area did not withhold FICA on those payments, because that's what we thought was the right thing to do. Well, now when those checks are being issued to the employees, the employer, the school district, has to pay the FICA tax, which will be $121,000. That is a one-time-only cost. It would not be recurring, obviously, in the future. The next several items are really somewhat related. So we have an adjustment made to the budget for retirement costs, and those really relate to the fact that our salary costs are higher than what had been originally budgeted. So when we factor in a very small change in the retirement rate, but really looking at what the total salary cost is for the district, there will be additional retirement costs of about $692,000. The next item are position changes, salary changes, termination payments, extended day pay, and other compensation items. I really tried to just add those together. So you have the situation where you've had a tough time, as well as other districts having substitutes. So what happens is the teachers end up providing the services, and they're extending their day, and they're being compensated for their time. So those are things that would not have been in the original budget, but are now included here because it's the reality of what's happening. Same thing with termination payments. There've been a couple individuals who've left service with the district. They've already been paid out a termination payment that would not have been anticipated in the original budget. So those types of things have to be incorporated. The next item relates to health insurance. So when we look at what the original budget was, and we look at what your actual premium costs are on a monthly basis, there's an additional approximately $800,000 that needs to be included in the budget. So what that is, is if we look at the actual cost that was incurred by the district through June 30 of 2017, it was $3.4 million. There's about a 4.5% increase in the insurance cost, and we actually had four additional people that are being provided insurance. So when you look at that with the changes that you've had in hard caps and other types of offerings, there is an additional cost to the district that wasn't in the original budget. The next item here is additional payments through the vendor programs due to the increased enrollment. So as you know, the district participates in a series of programs with some vendors that attract students to the district. And if you remember on that revenue slide, we had about $880,000 of additional revenue coming in from enrollment increases. We have an amount that we now have to pay to that, those vendors, for the fact that they helped us attract those students. The good thing is, the net number is positive, so it is adding to the overall result of the district. We just account for it in revenue and expenditures. Last two items here, so we have additional tuition costs that the district will pay for our special ed students that are attending center programs at other school districts. So they had two additional students that came into the district this year that have some special needs, and there are costs that are associated with that. And then when we looked at the budget for utilities, rentals, maintenance costs, those types of things, the budget was light by about $86,000. And how we got there is we just look at what pace are you on right now in terms of your actual expenditures, and make sure it looks like that will be the cost to the end of the year. Will it come out exactly? No, it will not. That's why you do another budget amendment, but we knew right now it looks to be a bit light. And then finally, we have that other adjustment. So you'll see, again, I've got that $462,000 listed there for that direct pass-through on the retirement. And you'll notice that the other amount is $397,000. So we actually have some reductions in costs there, and I netted those with that increase. And so you have a $397,000 increase. So overall, the expenditures are the ones that have popped up quite a bit from what we had originally budgeted, and those will be the ones that need to be looked at. But as I said before, this is not a one-year fix at all, so it will just have to be looked at over time with input from many, many stakeholders. So what comes next from a budgetary perspective is to have deeper discussions with the stakeholders about what revisions may or may not be able to be accomplished. In all reality, today is February the 12th. The opportunity to make significant change between today and June 30 is probably not very practical, nor is it something that the Department of Treasury is expecting. You have to look and do it in a measured fashion, because the number-one goal is to make sure that the kids have good programs, that they have the support that they need. And you can't make all of these changes significantly without impacting their educational experience. So you have to really take all of that into consideration. So what does that mean? You had to communicate with the Department of Treasury, and your team will have to continue to do that and build a plan that's perhaps longer term. The best thing in my mind is build a long-term plan that you can live with, and if it's, if you turn out better or you can pay it off faster, that's great. But don't strap yourself so significantly that you can't provide the services that you need to your students. So I think you'll have another budget amendment that comes prior to the end of June 30, just like always. And then you'll be looking at what your budget will be for '18, '19, and all of those things will occur prior to June 30. So I think Dr. Croupy also wanted to make some comments about this.
Thank you. And I want to thank you very much, Laura. I know we've been working, the ISD's been working really hard to support us during this time. And I first want to take a moment and remind us about the wonderful programs that we've been building for the last three years in the school district, which are really, really important. And I think as we move through this process in the next several months, as we look at the budget that we currently have in place, we need to stop and think about the things that we have put in place, because they're really important to think about. We've been hit this year with a lot of things that have made changes to our budget, like substitutes. When you think about the change that we've had to do, and our teachers have had to sub, especially at the junior high and high school, almost every single day on their planning periods, which is almost double the cost of a substitute. When you look at that, when you add in the retirement cost and the FICA cost, those are things that you really can't plan for. And that, while we've tried to move left and right and encourage more substitutes to come into the district, or hire full-time substitutes into the district, that hasn't worked for us. So those are things that we need to think about and plan for, about what other solutions can we put in place for this school district. The GSRP piece as well. Those are changes that have happened to us that are things that we couldn't plan for as, for as well. The, the reduction in the loss in the cost from the other counties, as well as the change in the birth date that started in the beginning of the school year about what students we could let in and what we couldn't, which ultimately caused us to not be able to fill some of our classrooms. And when the change happened in November with the legislature about letting, changing that birth date for us, was a little bit too late. And so we, we made a decision not to try to fill classrooms, and even though that that was a loss to us financially, we also knew that if we expended more dollars on the other side, that that could, that could ultimately hurt us as well. So we have some things that are happening to us while we're currently in that budget process that we, that we couldn't recover from. But there's a lot of wonderful things that are happening, and we have to encourage those things to continue. Remember, we have revamped our programs curriculum-wise, K-12, and we continue to grow our students. And so that's really important. If you think back three years ago, we were losing students, 250 to 300 a year, and we continue to grow our students. And so that's important. We need to be thinking as we walk through this process over the next several months, that we really think about that, and that we stay really positive, and we work with our staff, and we work with you as a board, and we work with our stakeholders to think through those programs, to think about what are continuing to attract students to come into Hazel Park, and we look down the line. We'll be having conversations with Treasury, starting actually tomorrow, and talking about and working with the ISD on that eight-to-ten-year plan, to talk about what would that look like, and are we able to get that approved? And then what do we do moving forward? Because you can't change this in a short period of time. Rachel, you were getting ready, were you asking a question?
Yeah, I mean, I remember when we sat three years ago, and we were drafting our first deficit elimination plan, you know, they, they really, the Department of Treasury and the state really wanted us to really look at how we were going to grow our student population, how we were going to make sure that we were meeting all the mandates. And they did suggest to us that maybe five years was, at that time, a lofty goal, but they would try to support us at any time to try to make that goal. And really, what this comes down to is the legislature passing laws and putting more mandates on school districts and not properly funding them. So unfortunately, as much as we can be frustrated with this, I am happy, you know, with the administration for bringing this to our attention so timely, and that we are continuing to grow students, and we just have to continue to, in this unsure climate, unfunded climate in our state legislature, continue to kind of dodge the bullets as they come at us, because really those, when those, when they cut programming for our center programs, or they ask us to take more dollars out of here, they're, they're really asking us, as a small district, to take those costs ourselves. So, I mean, it's, it's not pleasant to be where we are, but I think, I think there is a positive thing. I think there are some things that maybe we can scale back on, or maybe we can take a different approach out. We can be a little more creative.
Well, we certainly will be working as a cabinet, and then as an administrative team, and then coming back to the Financial Committee to talk about some ideas and some strategies that we will look at. And we will be doing that in a very timely manner, about what kind of things can we do during this school year, and then what kind of suggestions do we have for the following school year? And then the Financial Committee will make some suggestions about how we bring that back to the board. But one of the things that we do need to do is really think about, how do we keep things intact? Because people are excited about coming to Hazel Park, and they still will be excited about coming to Hazel Park. I mean, I think your conversation is something that I'm going to invite Dr. Wanda Cook-Robinson up here to talk about, because I think it's really important to think about what's happening in the state and into other school districts around us. There are great things that our teachers are doing here, and as disappointing and as frustrating this is for all of us, this is a blip on our radar screen that we just need to turn around and work together to solve in a positive manner. The good thing that you see right now is that we have a really clean budget that a lot of people have put together, and we can see what the lefts and the rights are, and what needs to be turned around, and what needs to be done differently. So could I invite Dr. Wanda Cook-Robinson, our superintendent of Oakland Schools, to come up and talk to you?
Good evening.
Good evening.
And it's good to see this board again. If you remember, several years ago, I sat with you, with Treasury, when we talked about this situation that we were in and what was possibly coming. I made a commitment from Oakland Schools to be with you then, and I renew that commitment to you tonight. We are here to support you, and we'll be with you all the way. But you're exactly right. Since that time, there have been a lot of stressors that have been put on districts. Districts have been asked to pay for items that were not in our original budgets or even on our radar. For example, the 3% healthcare. We didn't know when it was coming back. Be honest with you, old timers like myself thought it was never coming back. But now that it is back, we now have $120,000 here in Hazel Park to pay for the FICA. That was not expected. At the same time that we wanted to put together a deficit elimination plan, we had to ensure that there would be good instruction in the classrooms, and that those classrooms wouldn't suffer. But let me tell you what's happening around the state. It's not just here in Hazel Park. It's happening across the state, and it's happening in this county. I don't know if you're aware of the School Research Finance Collaborative. If not, I will send Dr. Croupy a report. I was a member of that 22-member collaborative and the Steering Committee. This was a group of bipartisan business folks in education, and we all came together and said, "It's time we do something about the funding of education in Michigan, because it's broke." And we all agreed on that. And as you know, business and education doesn't always agree, but on that, we did. So we set out to figure out, what does it cost to educate a child in the state of Michigan? We started with a $100,000 grant from the Keller Foundation. That $100,000 grant was just for planning, and we had to commit that we would not politicize the situation. It had to be just the facts. But then we had to turn around and raise, through the education and community, $777,000. The total cost to do an adequacy study in Michigan was $8,777,763. And I know, because we had to raise those dollars. And we did it. We did it through the ISDs and other organizations. On January 18th, we delivered that report to the community, and we are still doing those presentations. And what we found is that it costs $9,590 base to educate a child. If you are in a district that has a high percentage of English language learners, then you need additional funds. If you are a district that has a high percentage of poverty, then you need additional funds on top of that, $95,90. And if you are a district that has a high percentage of special education students, then you need an additional amount. None of that has come forward. But here in Hazel Park, let me commend this board and this superintendent for what you've been able to accomplish in a very difficult education climate. What I see across the county and my other colleagues, constancy and consistency of instruction is a problem. Because districts like Hazel Park, that do not have extremely high pay scales, are often in a point where districts that pay more, they will get, they will, how should I put, I'm trying to be politically correct. They will entice your teachers away. So you get good teachers, good pair of professionals, and you spend money and time training them, and within several months, they are gone. When you have students that come into your district that are special ed, that have enormous issues, and that brings a large cost, it can move your budget from point A to point Z very quickly. I'm seeing this across, in particular, the bottom end of the county. Not only Hazel Park, Madison, Oak Park, Clarenceville, smaller districts that don't have that economy of scale, they can't absorb when they lose a teacher and three special ed students come in. It's very, very difficult. So I say to you, Amy, you are not alone. As you know, the many conversations that we've had with you and your colleagues, this is a constant battle. But to this board, I want to commend you for continuing to support the students here. I had the opportunity to come down and spend a half-day in the district last week. And I went through the buildings, and I viewed the programs, and let me tell you that I was very much impressed. So I'm here just to provide some moral support to you, this board, and to this superintendent, and to let you know that the commitment from Oakland Schools remains. Yes?
Juan, it's good to see you again, and I'm glad we're not sitting around that table.
You and me both.
That study is, is enlightening. I mean, the, that's a couple grand a student. What is being done at the state level to look at increasing that? I mean, they're, they're passing bills like crazy to put more mandates on us, but not funding them. Are they pretty, pretty, are they pretty serious about bringing that to the table? How, do you know how Superintendent Winston and Governor Steiner feel about this?
We are extremely serious. We have met with Superintendent Winston. He has agreed to support this study. In addition, he's meeting with a group of organizations around the state that is called the Shared Ten. And they had to vote on three initiatives that they would focus on from his office from MDE. The number-one item was the collaborative. So we have his full support. We have a team that will be presenting to the state board to help them to understand all of the components of the study. We have met with legislators. We are, we have met with agencies. We're meeting with everyone who will listen. In addition, we have partnered with individuals who have worked on the 21st Commission Study. Do you remember the governor commissioned a study for the 21st century? We are working with them. And when it came to the area where they needed to work on finance, they said, "We're going to partner with the School Research Collaborative." So at the table is business and industry. They have supported this study, and we are asking the governor... And we are asking the governor to take a look at this study and to make some adjustments. We have met with his office, with his chief education advisor, Skylar Sawyer. We have also met with the Senate and the House Fiscal coordinators that actually do the costing out. So we are getting the information out, and we are asking everyone to work with us. We have resolutions from, oh, Tammy, you're going to have to help me, over 500 school districts that have passed resolutions, as well as sent funding for this study, that said, "We stand with this study, and we want the true education cost for our children here in Michigan."
No, it's great. I just hope they, it sounds like they're taking it seriously, just hope it comes down the pike sooner than later.
Well, I was with the governor today. I was tempted to take him in a corner and bring this up. Don't write that down in the mix. The governor was at our, I'm going to be in trouble. The governor was at our Northeast Center. As you know, one of his initiatives is career and technical education. And this is what his mantra is, and he's bringing more funds to that. We know that he has looked at the study because he has said he wants to increase, have the largest increase to the foundational allowance in the last 10 years. But I would ask, and I hope all of you, if you get an opportunity, will ask him as well, not to make an arbitrary decision, but to make an informed decision based on data in which we have for him.
Yes, that's great.
I have a question for you. Our plan was to be out of deficit 2020. You were there with us when we came up with it. What would be the benefit of extending a deficit? I guess, because at the end of the deficit, no matter how far you go, you still have to come out ahead. So extending it to spend more money just kind of puts you behind the eight ball at the end. So I guess I need convinced to say, why would we want to do this?
Well, this is a decision that Dr. Croupy and this board will have to make. If you don't extend the deficit, let's say you want to pay the deficit off tomorrow, you have just devastated your classrooms. Because you will not have enough money to pay your teachers and to come and to teach your children. So in essence, there'll be very little instruction. And I'm speaking from experience. As all of you know, Oakland Schools supported the school district of Pontiac in the first consent agreement in this state. One of the issues they faced was this exact issue, is that in paying back the deficit, and theirs, by the way, was 52.2 million, of which they have paid over half back at this point. But if they wanted to try to wipe that out quicker, it reduces the amount of money that goes to the classroom for instruction. If that happens, your student achievement scores are going to plunge. They're not going to drop. They're going to plunge.
So you're saying we should be spending more money on the teacher end, like teaching in the classroom versus curriculum being spent? Like, how does that work? We spend so much money on curriculum.
Well, I don't know your budget. I can only share with you that Dr. Croupy can probably tell you how much money is behind each child. In Pontiac, for example, it had went down to less than $1,000 a child. And they saw, yes, and they saw student achievement plunge, and when their test scores started to go down, no one wanted to come to the district. So what you would have to do is to look at, how much money are, do you, in this elimination plan, at five years, at eight years, at 10 years, how much money is behind each child for the instruction in the classroom? And then you have a decision to make. If you want to do a short-term plan and do it, let's say in five years, what does that amount become? And if your test scores fall, and your teachers are enticed away, then who comes to the district? So these are decisions that you are much better at making than I, because I don't know, I know the numbers, but I don't know all of the instruction. What I saw last week, I would think you would want to keep in place. I met an outstanding, two outstanding principals.
Oh, we've got fabulous.
And I know you don't want to lose them. I met teachers who were engaged in the classroom.
We've got great teachers.
I opened the door and stuck my head in, and the kids didn't move. They were on it. They were that engaged. Pardon?
You didn't get yelled at by the teacher?
No, guests don't usually get yelled at. She's like, I got yelled at. And Amy will tell you, when she opened the door, I walked all the way in. I didn't peep in, I walked all the way in. I wanted to sense the climate and get a view of the delivery of the instruction. But that, in essence, is your decision, and it's an excellent question.
Thank you.
But a decision that only all of you can make.
Do I have something? It's nice to see you again.
It's good to see you.
Back in July, we had communication from Dr. Croupy that yourself and Ms. Evans and the Treasury said we were in great shape when Mr. Rumzik was contemplating leaving. And so that was just really exciting. They, you were giving their blessing that we could post outside of the district for our finance person. So for this to happen was like a really big shock.
I understand that.
Just from July until now. And tonight, I appreciate the presentation. It's very clear, very understandable. But it makes me wonder, what happens next year when there's hidden costs that come in and come? You know, there's, will we ever be out of a deficit? You know? I know districts do it. I've read about them, and it is possible. But it's still concerning that things can come upon us like that and be great in July and in this shape, what, six months later? So, and I've served on the Michigan PTA Board of Directors, and so this, the funding, the amount of money for students, it's always, it's been such an issue. You know, that different districts give more money, we're transient, a lot of our kids come and go, so it affects our test scores. But even the funding, that has went on forever. We know it takes more money than they give us, or they ever will. And they mandate things that they don't fund you for. It's historical, you know, it's just what they do. But anyway, thank you.
I agree with you. And as you know, I was a local superintendent, and this has been happening for a number of years. You guys remember 20J? Remember that discussion about that extra money, the districts that, you know, were, after Proposal A, there were a list of districts that got some additional funding because of the funding formula. Southfield was one of those districts. I went to bed that evening, I had a balanced budget. I woke up the next day, I had a $5.2 million deficit. I lost, actually lost weight, which was monumental for me over that.
What a way to do it.
I agree with you, these things happen. And I think what you have to do is exactly what you and Dr. Croupy are doing, is asking the hard questions and decisions. And you're going to have to cut. And you're going to have to make some tough decisions, because you're going to have to prepare for that. Now that you see the pattern, you've got to prepare. But that's, again, a decision that you and your superintendent are going to have to sit down and say, "Well, we're going to have to do X or do Y." And that's why your question is such a good one.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. It's good to see all of you again.
Good to see you.
All right, at this time, we will move forward to the...
I have a couple of questions. Okay. That was an opportunist. I'm looking over the report, looking back at our audit. I do see some discrepancies in some numbers. I don't know who I need to speak to, whether we want to speak to it now or later, because I see quite a few differences that I don't see in the book. I have the book right here, and I'm trying to find the numbers as I'm going through, listening to everything.
So Chuck, perhaps you can have a meeting with myself and Lori, and sit down and do that. I think that might be a more appropriate time.
All right. Because, yeah, I have. And then the other question is, with all of this new expenditure of almost $3 million, were we aware of these at the beginning of the year? These just thrown at us at the beginning of this year? Or please, enlighten me. We're looking at $3.5 million, adding to a budget that we already are strapped. This, I don't understand why we didn't get it sooner. Is it hidden somewhere? What?
So I want to remind you that these are numbers that are from the original budget to what we're finding today. So they're not hidden, they're not...
Well, no, I didn't mean it that way. I'm saying, like, she's already projecting $183,000 for retirement? How many people are she planning on having retire?
So these are numbers that, as we are amending the budget, that I reached out to our administrators, and I said, "Give me an idea of who you think are going to retire." So what's important is those numbers weren't built into this budget, and we know that those individuals could have costs that are into this budget school year. And what would happen, Chuck, is if we don't put those budget numbers into this year, those are potential buyouts. And so let's say these individuals do retire, and we don't have a budget line item for them. There was not a budget line item for those individuals in there, and these are names of people that have mentioned or done. So it could be that those people won't retire, but these are people that we believe that we've kind of heard. So we don't have names, we don't have...
I don't want names, I just want numbers.
So the reality is, is if we don't put that line item in there, and they do retire, then we'll have a negative balance for that. And so as everybody's been working on this, they looked at what the original budget was from last spring, and they looked at the numbers from the end of the year, right, from the actual last year's, and said, "Here's what was expended, here's what was budgeted, and here's what we have happening. And do these make sense? What have we expended so far? Here's, you know, here's health insurance, and here's what people are taking..."
Well, everyone else's insurance kills us.
And here's the subcosts, so those are expended, just talking about substitutes. Those are costs that you didn't expect to have. And again, like I said, those are double the cost of what you would have expended in a substitute line item, because of the amount of subs, substituting, and the number of days that we're having to sub inside the classrooms. Those are substantial costs. And then when you also have reduction in grants and other line items, those are things that are happening as well. And so those are all things that, as we sit down, again, as a cabinet, and then as an Ad Council, and then we bring it to the financial committee, will have some pieces. Would we have liked to have had these conversations earlier? Yes. But we couldn't bring those conversations to you until, obviously, we went through the process that we did. And we're really grateful that the ISD brought Laura to us from Platte Moran to bring us that extra depth of expertise in there, to make sure that what we were looking at was really clear and specific, so that we were able to line out to you, here specifically where those line items were, that we weren't throwing a dart at a board and just guessing. We can really line out to you, line by line, where those differences are.
All right. Okay.
And the next budget amendment would be in April, May timeframe?
Well, March. You would approve the amended budget. And then probably May would be a budget, the final budget amendment. But we will be getting to, we are already starting to talk about 18, 19, right now as we speak.
Was there anybody else that had any final question before we move on?
Sounds like we have a plan going forward, and we're going to just have to be creative. But...
All right. Next item on the agenda is the district employee perfect attendance. Dr. Croupy, did you want to speak to that?
Just again, this is the December perfect attendance, and we want to celebrate those staff members that have, again, as you talk about substitute costs and the great cost to the school district for those that are not here, especially when there's a lack of substitutes across the county and across the nation. We just want to, again, celebrate those employees that have perfect attendance for the month. And so we continue to bring that to you, to show you those individuals that have been here every single day for the month of December. And we will continue to bring that to you in January as well. Those individuals are sent a certificate, as small as that is, we'd like to do more, to celebrate and thank them for coming to work every single day in Hazel Park.
Thank you. Next action item is an approval of the asbestos consultant agreement for Edison-Max slash Longfellow renovation project.
I'd like the Board of Education to approve the administration's recommendation to approve the hiring of Arc Environmental as the asbestos consultant for the Edison-Max Longfellow renovation project.
I second the motion.
Is there any discussion?
I'd like to explain that to you if I could. So as you know, we are doing work on Longfellow and Edison-Max, and part of that work is that we need to have a firm come in to develop a plan for removing asbestos in both Edison-Max and Longfellow. So this is a consultant to come in to do that work for us. So there were three competitive bids put in place, and attached you have, coming out of the Buildings and Grounds Committee. Oh, boy, I got logged out. The proposal that's put in place for you, and I believe it is for Arc, Arc Environmental, it is not a required, because it is $14,000, it is not required, 14 for Edison-Max and four for Longfellow, it is not required that you approve this, it does not go through the $23,000 bid threshold, but the Buildings and Grounds Committee asked me to bring this to you for your approval at this time. There will be several projects as we move through the Edison-Max and Longfellow that we will be bidding out, that we will bring to you. This is not a cost to the school district. I want to remind you through that, that this is a project that we are really grateful that we are working with our other school district colleagues to work on. So part of this reminder is Longfellow, that the goal is, is that Edison-Max will move into Longfellow for next year, and then at the end of next year, Edison-Max will start to be renovated. And this is all paid for with P-18 funds. But you approve this, and then the P-18 funds reimburse the school district for these, for this work. I would ask for your approval.
Is the asbestos in the ceiling tile or something?
What was that?
Is the asbestos the ceiling tile? Or where is the asbestos at? Is it wrapped around the pipes? Where are they removing it from?
I can't answer that.
I believe it's in the ceiling.
And what about Longfellow? Greg, do you know?
Floor tiles, it's in the plumbing, wrapped around the plumbing.
Okay.
The palms, it's awful. It's all over the school.
All right. I was assuming something up in the air, but that makes sense.
It's the ceiling tile, still the old one.
Okay.
It's all over the school.
Any other discussion?
Yep.
All right. Roka?
No?
Yes.
Mr. Hempel?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Mrs. Hempel?
Yes.
Schla?
Yes.
Atkins?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is the approval of a contract to hire a person in the technology department. Did I get a motion? Can I get a motion on the table?
I'll make the motion just for discussion.
Sure.
I second the motion.
Okay, so as you know, we have a technology person vacant inside the program. We have had that position vacant for some time, and unfortunately, the person was with us for a week and left, and we've had difficulty filling that position, like many people have had difficulty. So we have gone with a contractual firm. This position is in support of the teachers and the Chromebooks and getting them repaired out in the school district, as well as machines, and keeping our technology working within our school district. The cost of going with a contractual firm is actually a $15,000 savings from the original cost that we have budgeted, within our budget for this position. And so for six months, it would be $35,000, because we're not paying retirement and FICA and the other pieces as well. After the six-month period of time, we would reevaluate this person to determine whether or not we would go forward with hiring them or continue with an IT contract.
All right. For discussion, I think that we just now saw our audit. We're not in any shape to be hiring anybody. I think that we have people in our technology department that maybe need to step the game up just a tad bit, so we don't have to cut anybody. But I think that asking us to hire someone at $35,000, that is like, for six months, it's no brain or no.
$40,000 for six months?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, for six months. I mean, we have, we hired, we have, we have our people in technology, Tom, we have Jerome, who we had. If that's the case, I would rather just put Darren back on, give him more duties, or somebody, just to help out, because we just keep seeing, we just keep adding. Like, we're wanting to extend our deficit so that we can keep hiring. It's crazy.
The concern would be is that this is one of the positions that keeps, we are struggling to keep our technology moving, and that was a concern, as we brought that forward, which is why we showed the savings of the position that we have. And as you are technology, we have to be able to run technology in the district. You're not only talking about, you know, your computers for your teachers, your screens for your teachers, your Chromebooks. You are running a one-on-one district. We are already... We are already running with less staff members than you should have to run the amount of technology you have within the school district.
Well, if you need me to volunteer to come in after school to check in Chromebooks or something, let me know.
Yeah, I would have concerns that we don't have enough support for the Chromebooks. So I can see why this position is still needed. But I understand the concern, you know, as we're looking at everything closely. Is there anybody else that had any other comments on this?
Okay, let's go through a call.
Mr. Hempel, I'm sorry, Mrs. Hempel?
No.
Mr. Hempel?
No.
Hinton?
I think no.
Hammond?
No.
No?
No.
Schla?
No.
Atkins?
No.
We will then have to make a list of the items that won't be completed within the schools due to the lack of staffing.
If you need help, call me.
All right, let's move on to the next item. The JAR Don camp reimbursement. Can I get a motion?
I make a motion. I move the Board of Education approve the recommendation for the additional pay of $27 an hour plus benefits for 7.25 hours for the teachers who attend JAR Don camp program that entitled time.
Support. Discussion.
Okay, we agreed to pay reimbursement for our fifth grade teachers for an additional day when they spend at camp. At that time, there was not a discussion about our JAR Don teachers. This comes out of the center program budget, and it was evaluated that there are funds that would not take us over the cap for JAR Don for these teachers to be paid, so that it would be commensurate to our teachers that are going to fifth grade camp as well.
Any other discussion?
This is going to be paid out of the center program fund.
Yes.
Thank you.
When do they go?
They go in the spring too, I believe. May.
I didn't know they had one.
I didn't as well. I didn't as well.
Thank you.
All right, roll call.
Mr. Hempel?
Yes.
Mrs. Hempel?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
No?
Yes.
Schla?
Yes.
Atkins?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is special education funding agreement with the Oakland ISD. Can I get a motion?
I move that the Board of Education approve the special education funding agreement between the Oakland Intermediate School District and Hazel Park School District as written or substantially similar.
I second the motion.
Discussion.
So this is the agreement that we would have with Oakland ISD. And so, we will ask you to approve it or language substantially similar to this. And the reason that we do that is to see if there's any final tweaks that the Oakland ISD needs to put in place for this agreement. This is the agreement that allows us to have them give us the funds to put and do the changes to Edison for us.
Any other discussion?
Nope.
All right, roll call.
No?
Yes.
Schla?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Mr. Hempel?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Mrs. Hempel?
Yes.
Atkins?
Yes.
All right, next on the agenda is a superintendent update. Dr. Crouppen?
Okay, this evening, the superintendent update will be done by Mrs. Dahmich, which will be the STEAM update, which was part of our yearly board calendar that we would talk about, that we would have at this point in time.
So I get the nice opportunity of coming up and talking about some of those great things and changes that we've been making this year. And it really is focused on the STEAM and STEM ecosystem that we're trying to build in Hazel Park, and some of the great things that are going on in the school. So first, what I'd like to do is give you an overview of some of the goals that we've had for this year. So as you can see, one of the things that we really worked to do is to implement the STEAM classes in grades K through five in our elementary schools, which has been accomplished. We also wanted to develop STEAM maker spaces at Edison and Advantage. And that's kind of an in-progress piece. I'll talk a little bit more about why that's in progress as the presentation goes on. Another thing that we hope to do, and we have done, is install 3D printers in all of the schools. We have expanded the Project Lead the Way courses at the junior high and the high school. We have implemented a robotics course at the high school. We've also done a lot with our expanded after-school opportunities in robotics at the high school and one of our elementary schools in the junior high. One of the really great benefits of what we've been doing is working through partnerships. And we are working in great partnerships with Oakland University, as well as Lawrence Tech. And we have some great STEAM/STEM community events that we have done. So I'd like to first talk about what we've done in the elementary schools. And as you can see, we had an opportunity to purchase some materials, which we did at the beginning of the school year. I'm not going to go through what all of those things are, because it would take a little bit of time. But we have some great opportunities for our kids to engage in materials where they can build, build spatial reasoning, do some problem solving, do some inquiry. A lot of materials focused on coding and programming. We know there's important skills in our students, and we have some opportunities for them to be doing that. We also have 3D printers. Now, I will tell you, understanding and learning how to use a 3D printer takes a little bit more time. So although those are installed in our schools, they're not fully up and running, because we have to build capacity among staff members, as well as kids. But you can see that we've accomplished a number of goals, which is really utilizing the STEAM/STEM pieces to extend and enhance our curriculum. We've had our students engaged in a lot of design thinking and the engineering and design process. They have really been building those coding and programming skills, which we'll see a little bit later on in the presentation. And really having a lot of opportunities to communicate, think critically, be creative in their thinking, and engage in a lot of deep problem solving and inquiry, which as we know, when we think about those jobs of the future, and we know that's what we're preparing our kids for, those are the skills that they're going to need to have. Some of the things that our STEAM teachers are also doing as well is building curriculum. Those are not fully in place, because it takes a long time to do that. One of the great things about that is that we are making sure that our STEAM teachers are using the same format as the rest of our curriculum throughout the school district. So now I'd like to give you a little glimpse of what they're doing. And we have great pictures of our students. A couple of pictures showing them designing catapults. A lot of creative problem solving there. Most of the time, what they do is they give the kids a challenge, and the kids have to work together. They have to collaborate, they have to plan, they have to communicate, they have to think creatively, and realize some sort of product at the end. We have, in the bottom middle, framed in yellow, those are the Ozobot bits. And basically, those are little robots that the students code and program. And they increasingly get more difficult with their challenges. At first, they just have them go forwards or backwards, but then they can really get very advanced with them and start to do a lot of different programming and coding. So those are the big areas at the elementary. As I said, we have also put in maker spaces at Edison Max. That's in place. You'll see pictures next. Advantage is a little bit different, because they're in the process of really building that space. One of the things you have to understand is that in our elementary settings, we have a teacher that really supports that at Edison Max and Advantage. The teachers that are in the classrooms have to support that as well. And so, there's a bigger learning curve and less time for the teachers to build the capacity on that. But we have a lot of great things going on in our programs there. And one of the things that we said from the outset is that we wanted to make sure that all of our kids had these opportunities. So when you look at what we've done across the district, it really is powerful that we can say, K-12, our kids have STEM and STEAM opportunities in place in the schools. Little glimpse into Edison. You notice right here, we have 3D printers over to the right. We chose to put three smaller ones in that environment, so it could print a little bit faster. We have a nice open space for the kids to create and collaborate, and really build some of those skills. One of the next really big pieces, and I can say is really a hallmark of our school district, is our expansion of Project Lead the Way. In all of my conversations outside of the school district, I have to tell you that there's no other junior high where kids get Project Lead the Way in sixth grade, seventh grade, and eighth grade. So although that was a really big input and a really big investment, the outcome from our kids is a powerful piece. One of the goals that we have next year is to expand. Certainly, we'll have to think about how that looks in our budget, as we just had that conversation. But we have a lot of great conversations and a lot of opportunities for our kids. Another big piece that we see is the expansion of Project Lead the Way at the high school. We have the Introduction to Engineering program at the high school, which is really a continuation of what we're doing at the middle school. So, one of the important things that we're doing is we're building foundation at the middle school. So once they get up into the high school level, they're really going to grow, and they're really going to build those skills, and really pique their interest in pursuing one of those as a career. Some of the pictures at the junior high, we see them in a spaghetti tower STEM challenge. I think a lot of you are familiar with that. We have, up in the upper left, we have some of the work in one of the design and modeling classes. And basically, what they had to do was take those skills, and they had to design a therapeutic toy for a child who had cerebral palsy. So you can see, one of the big hallmarks of Project Lead the Way is also not just building, but also thinking about how we can apply those skills to an authentic scenario. We have students using CAD software to use a 3D printer. We have a number of design challenges and really building some interesting information on the process of electricity. So another one of the really big components here was to build a robotics course at the high school, and we do have one at the high school. Currently, our students are building VEX IQ robots. One of the really nice parts of this class is that early on last year, when I had to institute this, I have to be honest with you, I know nothing about robotics. So rather than guess, I reached out to Lawrence Tech. Lawrence Tech has been a huge resource for us and really helped us guide what that program looks like. We've had opportunities for our kids to go to Lawrence Tech to learn from their professors. And you'll see that in one of the pictures. We have also had individuals from Lawrence Tech volunteer their time. We have an individual, his name is Elmer Santos. And he just enjoys VEX robotics so much that he comes to our robotics class and our club every week, really, just volunteering his time. So the kids have had a lot of great opportunities learning from him and really have enriched the experience that they are getting that's also blended into the robotics class and the robotics club at the end of the school day. Little glimpse into the robots. And up in the upper right, that is Elmer Santos. That is the person who's volunteering his time. So another big piece has really been the after-school, our summer robotics opportunities. And as you know, we had STEM camps in the summer. And those were facilitated by DAPCEP. They have reached out to support us as well this summer. We have built in our STEM club at the junior high, and that's been an ongoing piece, and I know that's been going on for at least two or three years at the junior high. One of the big, exciting things is our First Robotics. We have our club at the United Oaks, our first Lego League. We have the first tech challenge at the Hazel Park Junior High. We have the robotics team at the high school. I would definitely encourage you, if you're interested in this, to maybe stop by the high school sometime this week at night, or all day next Monday and Tuesday. They are getting ready to complete their robot for competition. And I know not a lot about First Robotics, but I've learned that February 20th is a special day, because basically, they build their robot, they're going to practice, and it's bag day. So they have to bag their robot up, they have to have someone sign off that they haven't touched it until their competition day. I would encourage you to go up there, because one of the things that I've been so excited about is to walk back into the high school and see that metal shop up and running. So one of the really great opportunities has been is that the coaches and mentors are engineers. So we have approximately four engineers working with our students, about eight to 10 high school students. We also have a machinist in there that, under his guidance, of course, is showing the students how to use the machine. So I would definitely encourage you to get up there if you can, because it's a great opportunity. As a matter of fact, Marty Gubow, who is one of the coaches, has been the lead champion behind this. And his wife, Colleen, also works at Webster, is the mentor and coach as well. He has reached out, he has grabbed engineers, any engineer that will talk to him, basically, he grabs to bring in. And he has also donated an electrical bench to the metal shop, because he so believes in this program. So I would definitely encourage you to go up there and see what's going on. Plus, I want to make sure that I also note all the work from the robotics club that Kevin Gallatin and Pam Sparks have been doing for years with our students. They are now expanding to Robofest. So they will travel to Lawrence Tech using the VEX robots that they're working on in class and engage in a competition. They will also continue to engage in Square One. They have done that for years, the underwater ROV competition. They will also compete in the Navy Sea Perch competition. And they also attend the Square One Mobility Day in Ann Arbor. And that's focused on autonomous vehicles. So if you can see, we've really built that strong foundation during the day. And it's really expanding nicely into what we're doing after school and in the summer. Few little pictures there. And then another really, really key component is our partnership work. We knew from the outset to really make a STEM/STEAM program really robust. It cannot just rely on what we do in the school district. We really need to partner with business, community, and higher ed. And this demonstrates some of the partnerships that we have created with Oakland University, Lawrence Tech, and some other areas. So basically, Oakland University School of Engineering has committed some time to us. For example, one of the things that they're doing this year is all of our fourth grade students, at the end of February and beginning of March, will travel to Oakland University and spend a day at the School of Engineering. Another great place, if you haven't been to the School of Engineering, it's a brand-new building. They have some amazing labs and opportunities for kids to interact. And what they do is they take the kids in, and they go into the electrical lab, they go into their physics lab, they go into the geothermal lab, and they expand and explore on the current curriculum that we have in the district and really understand the authentic application. As a matter of fact, when I planned this with the person, the outreach person, she took our curriculum, our newly-written curriculum, and said, okay, this is where the key parts are that will align with what we can offer for them. The big piece about that is Oakland University's paying for all of that, for our kids. So all of our fourth graders are going, of no expense other than some transportation costs. But beyond that, they're paying for all of it. Another piece that they're doing, and I did this last year with some high school students, is the ISE workshop. They have a very big industrial systems engineering program there. And so, what they are doing is they allow 20 to 25 high school students to attend, and again, interact with ISE professors. They bring in young professionals in the field that have graduated from Oakland University. And they really run them through the work and the simulation of what an industrial systems engineer does. I attended one of the days last year. I attended one of the days last year, and what was really nice is that they started the session with talking about, hey, what does an industrial systems engineer do? And so it really piqued the interest of the kids to say, hey, maybe this is a career that I want to pursue. And if we think about, this is all in service to preparing our kids for what their world is going to look like, and what they need to be ready to engage in. As I mentioned, actually, two other ones. You know that we are engaged in a conversation with Oakland University over somehow looking at reopening Jardon, reopening the auto shop to engage some of our Jardon students. That's a proposal. I know you see that in the updates, it's just in the proposal stage, that will be brought to Dr. Crouppen, then eventually the board. But I just wanted to mention it, because it's been a strong partnership. Oakland University has reached out to us at every avenue to really support the work that we're doing, and they really believe in what we're doing here. Another really interesting piece, and again, once you build those partnerships, they just multiply, is that last week, the person who connected me with the ISE workshop emailed and said, "Hey, I know you're always looking for opportunities for your kids." Well, I have a great opportunity. Someone reached out to me from the Lean Learning Center in Troy. And Lean is really about system thinking and problem solving, and how you process through. And so they've reached out to me and said, "Hey, can you come meet with us in our Troy office? We really think, we want to give your high school students an opportunity here." So once again, another great partnership. What's really exciting about that is it's getting to the piece that we've really tried to push. K-12, university, and business partnerships, which is really where we're going to start to move the dial and really impact our students in moving education forward. So those things are starting to be realized. I talked a little bit about the Lawrence Tech University partnership, but another thing that happened, once our kids were out there, Dr. Chang leads a lot of that at the Marburger STEM Center out there, he reached out and said, "Hey, you know what? Love that your kids were on site. Can we think of more potential partnerships?" So they're just exploding, as soon as we get our feet in the door, we have more opportunities. Another thing that I wanted to make sure I mentioned is our First Robotics partnerships, because that's been a really positive piece. I really have to kind of give a shout-out to the Bloomfield Hills teams. The Bloomfield Hills teams, I was connected with through the coordinator of First in Michigan, and they have done nothing but offer support. They, all of their teams came to our elementary, their team came to our junior high meeting, and their teams actually came to the high school to demonstrate their robot. But beyond that, their high school team has invited our team to work in their space. They have donated parts that they are no longer using. So it's really, really an important partnership that I wanted to highlight. And essentially, one of the big pieces of First, one of the big pieces about First is it's not just about the doing, it's about the action and the opportunities for you to engage and give back. So this is an opportunity that our kids will have, as well, in turn. Again, the FRCT mentors, the engineers, and machinists that have really volunteered at the high school, and I'm sure will be volunteering for our elementary and our junior high team. And really, some great outpouring of support with dollars. I literally just reached out the other day to the community, and Jim Dyler of Amco Corporation, which is just down the street, donated $1,000 to the district to support robotics. We have Matrix Engineering and Sales gave a sizable donation as well. Another person is waiting for me to give him a phone call to tell him about the program. So this opportunity for our kids is getting out there, and people want to support it. So anybody else in the audience, businesses, if you want to donate, just give me a call. And then I think, I definitely want to make sure I say again, the Gubow family, they are the team mentors and coaches at the high school, but they're going much above and beyond what they need to with the donation of time. The donation, Marty Gubow donated an electrical engineering bench to the metal shop, just an outpouring, and various people are supporting through the GoFundMe. So that's been a really exciting journey to go down, and I'm happy to have been able to bring it to the school district. This is just a few pictures of the, a few pictures of the ISE workshop. We have a few pictures, the one in the bottom outlined in yellow, that's at Lawrence Tech University. Actually, the professor that's speaking is the one who comes and supports us, and another professor came by and wanted to take that picture and send it to us. They said they enjoyed having our kids, and they were great. They had, they were very involved, very invested, and did a wonderful job there. And the last one, the most fun, is our STEM/STEAM community events. You know, we did bring the 3D printer to the Hometown Huddle. We had a Maker Fair at the Farmer's Market, and we also had a Maker Fair at the Hazel Park Historical Museum. So I just wanted to get, give you an update on the things that we've done. Certainly, what we've done is not fully in place, there are always places that we can go, but really, the things that we set out to do at the beginning of the school year, we have pretty much implemented. So I will take any questions now, and just look forward to continuing this work in our district and bringing great programs for our kids and great opportunities. Any questions?
Yeah, I think it's really great, especially some of those community events, to watch the kids do the crafts, or the STEAM projects, sorry. They really just look forward to it, and they're really super engaged, so to be able to bring that into the classroom and outside events and going, I think it just is a sign of what we're supporting in the classroom. It's just really great to see it, like visually, so thank you for putting this together.
Yeah, this is great. It's really exciting to see the opportunities for our students. I know my daughter's at the junior high and just loves the Project Lead the Way classes that she's been having, so next year and this year. Anybody else have any other? Thank you very much for pulling that together for us.
Did you want to say something on the yearly, on the next slide on the calendar?
Only that, we, you know, Laura, you and I have started to work on developing the board yearly calendar, and have started to look through the different events, especially that superintendents have to do, and tried to put in place those for your suggestion or ideas for different months, based upon the kind of things that happen throughout the school year. And I wondered if you had a chance to look at it, if you had some input or ideas or other things you'd like to see on different months.
The idea is that this would be something we can go track to every year, right? That we know which months, we want to hear certain topics to make sure nothing gets overlooked. I know that's something we've been asking for, so thank you for helping pull this together. Anybody have anything that they wanted to suggest or change on this?
Can we add to it after tonight?
Yeah.
Oh, yes.
And I would also guess-
This would be a living, I mean, this really would be a living-
I have something I was passing on to you, and I have every single month, so it can be integrated with things I didn't know.
Okay.
So it's in, I have it here.
All right. We'll take a look at that.
And there might be some things that, as we go through the years, that you add or delete, or based upon how you go about it, but at least it would be a base.
I love the organizational tool, to know what's coming up. I love it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Last item on there says, "School Board Training," is that?
Just to kind of give an update of conversation, that we did meet Scott, and I don't know if you had a chance to send out that link?
I have not sent out that link, but I will be sending out a link to the board to do a board self-evaluation. So this is something that we said we were going to do a few years ago to follow up on, so if-
Is there a way to fail?
There's not a way to fail. We have a workshop with Scott, our consultant, that we've been meeting with, and he will get the output, and then we'll go through them at our next workshop, so.
We also have a legal one coming up, and I don't remember which date that was, I could kind of take a look at it?
I think it's April, April 23rd. Our workshop with Scott will have a law workshop. They're going to come and talk to us about open meetings and all these policy understandings that we, you know, continuously try to make sure we're following. So someone from the MSB will be coming to present that, Brad, someone or another. So I think that meeting's already on your, on our calendars, but just to let you know. So when we met with Scott, we were kind of trying to forecast what we'll do with him as our consultant the next few months, and these were a couple of things that came up.
April 23rd is Brad Banisak.
All right. Let's go through any final board member and administrative comments.
I do, of course. I was looking at the minutes from the Buildings and Grounds, and I was looking at the list of things that they, is this just a list of thinking of doing, or a list of what they are going to do?
It's a proposal of what we're planning for the year.
The most important items. Because I see a dump truck on here, and I don't see how, coming out of the sinking fund, a dump truck, I would think that maybe we need a dump truck, we could borrow one from the city or something. I don't see why we have to buy a dump truck.
So the dump truck is how we do our salting, and it's a must inside our school district. Without a dump truck, our guys would not be able to function, so that is a must within our school district.
They can't put them on the back of a pickup truck like other?
I can have Greg explain that probably better than I can, but no, it is a must.
Well, we're looking at the possible, possible purchase in one. Hasn't came back with proposals on the price yet. We're looking at all avenues. The list shows what we're looking at and the possibilities. It might be there and might not be there, based on the price, because there's quite a few things on the list that we need to get done, that will take up more of the money than others. So the vehicles might not be in this year's budget, but the avenue is to get us the prices. We'll look at them, and then we'll decide from there.
If you remember, the allocation is $575 per year, and so we had not had a chance to have a B&amp;G committee yet this year. And so what we did is ask Greg to prioritize, from the list of things that needed to be done, the top issues that he felt as head of our Buildings and Grounds needed to be completed. These were the top items. We spoke to the Buildings and Grounds Committee. Lori and Greg will be working now on getting a, Lori, our interim business manager over there, Lori. We'll be working on putting those prices together and bringing them back next month to the Buildings and Grounds, and seeing if they fit within the price range of that $575 that's part of that sinking fund.
That's the complete list of everything on there?
Yep.
Okay. This is this year's list.
We had that facilities analysis done, that we have $25 million worth of repairs to do, and there's nothing in that that said anything about a dump truck or a plow. It didn't have anything in there about the swimming pool, but I've since heard that we do need some things there, but that's not in the $25 million booklet plan that we have. So, and also, when I was on the committee, we got the breakdown of what the previous committee, the 2017, 18, 18, 19, 19, 20, and there's safety issues on there, to me, for children. When you don't have the right alarm system for fire, or you don't have safety handles on your doorknobs for fire, anyway, that's all part of the plan. I just wanted to bring up, the facility analysis had nothing to do with trucks. Right. It's about keeping our building safe, clean, manageable, in my opinion.
Don't worry, those are the top priorities. Right now, with the vehicles and everything, we're looking at prices.
And presently, how does he salt? What have you been using?
Just half.
$2,000, I found, we've got $2,000. And those usually last about six, seven years, and we've used it since 2000.
That's 17 years old. So-
We put about $18 per year. I'm sorry, what was that last part?
We put about $18 to $20 per year in it.
Thank you. All right, so as Chuck was saying, we're getting proposals on this, this would come up again, as that committee prioritizes what they're going to spend the sinking fund on. I would, I understand you're bringing up the facility plan, because we know that there's a lot in there that we still need to figure out how to do, and that's another fun topic for us to tackle at some point, is how to do all these facilities, things that are going to be needed in that big, huge facilities line we had done, so.
And I just wanted to confirm that that list was also placed in front of the Buildings and Grounds Committee of those things. But again, these are the things that our head Buildings and Grounds person is prioritizing based upon those safety things, because we have these items that need, if we don't have a salt truck, we can't salt the grounds, and so it has to be paid for somewhere. Additional buses as well. Our buses are not projected to pass inspection in this next school year, so we'll have to pay for them somehow. And so as we look at that whole total cost, we have to make a determination about where in the budget with those, and these are things that can be paid for out of the sinking fund.
Didn't we just buy a couple of new buses not too long ago?
Unfortunately, yes. But unfortunately, we did not buy new buses, we bought at least buses that were older, and unfortunately, they're not going to pass inspection.
I think it was under the previous, um, board, two boards ago, maybe, five, six years, we bought a couple of new buses.
You might have, but-
And I think we bought some more.
We bought some new buses the first year I came with Mr. Ramzek from Furdale.
All right. Sue, did you have more? Oh, sorry.
No, I'll be done. I think that the Building and Grounds Committee is doing what it's supposed to be doing, is looking at and putting together a wish list, and looking at prices to prioritize and bringing that back through, so I'm comfortable with that.
I just think that, though, the committees should be shared with the whole group. I get that you have a committee making these, but I've been complaining about the pool probably for the last eight years that I've been here, and the pool has not been touched.
The pool was talked about in great depth, there were questions brought about when-
And I did it, but we have other districts using the pool, so we have, like, other cities, because of our swim club, they come, they see our pool, it's not very attractive. Yeah.
So we're working on it.
All right. Any other final comments?
I do.
Rachel.
You know, I was thinking today, and with you coming up and us looking at this budget amendment item, I still think that it's shining here in Hazel Park, and there's really great things going on, and it made me think of a quote that John F. Kennedy said, that "At a time to repair a roof is when the sun is shining." So, and the sun is shining here, so we just need to get back on the roof and make some minor adjustments and keep moving on. So, it made me think of that today. That's all I got.
No, I'm good for this time.
Any final comments?
I do. I want to really thank our maintenance and custodial gentlemen and ladies who have been out working in the snow. We've had a tremendous amount of snow this winter, and I know over the last week that they have been over the weekend, in the mornings, in the evenings, and working tirelessly to make sure that the sidewalks and the parking lots are safe for our students and our staff to get here in school. And I know that they spend a lot of their time away from their families, so just a really huge shout-out to our custodial and maintenance, and say thank you for all that extra time and effort you've put in to make our school safe.
Absolutely. I forgot. Hazel Park Youth Assistance, we're having a swim night, March 8th, not the 1st. We had to postpone it due to lifeguards, and it's 6:00 to 8:00 PM at the high school for free. And then Chili Cookoff is March 15th at the junior high, 5:30 to 7:30.
Forgot to mention, the bowling for the Hazel Park Fire Department is this Friday night. I think it's signed up at 6:00 PM. Bowling starts at 7:00.
Great. Thank you.
Sorry about that.
All right, so thank you for your patience with this meeting. I just wanted to affirm that this board is, you know, committed to, you know, seeing this district be successful. Every decision we make is with students in mind, and in light of what we've learned tonight with the budget, we'll be, you know, doing some follow-up in our due diligence, and we take this very seriously, and we thank you for your support. So with that, I will-
I make a motion, you adjourn.